Folks, we'll call the meeting back to order here for this afternoon on July 24th. I want to thank Mr. Urban and the staff for providing or getting us picking up lunch today. And I think everybody enjoyed that and we weren't rushed trying to get to downtown LaGrange and get lunch and get back. So, thank you all for that and providing lunch. With that, we'll pick up where we stopped here after lunch. We're now down to questioning of the applicant and those opposing the application by the commission. So, commissioners, any questions for the applicant? Or the folks that are opposed to the application? Any questions? Okay, Mr. Hampton. All right, any questions? Mr. Finney?
What are we considering right at this minute?
We have a complete application.
The total application.
Correct.
So, any question is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay.
You have a question?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I don't want to rush folks, you know.
I'm trying to figure out where I'm going.
Okay, all right. Mr. Horton?
Yeah, thank you. I was just recalling in there that no sinks and toilets.
Is your mic on?
I'm on.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. No sinks or toilets or water facilities and so forth be approved in these kinds of things. And there's water and everything to this building. Are they just talking about not providing like an office with sinks and toilets and this and that? Or are they saying in the entire building? Because it states it in the ordinances.
The ordinances are, in my understanding, are based on they don't want somebody living in the unit. We have toilets in the facility. They will remain in the facility. We have water service in there. So, those will be used for customers that are using the indoor storage that have to use the facilities. But as far as a storage unit itself having any plumbing, no.
So, the point of the ordinance that it's written then was for that purpose, living quarters and things like that rather than actually having them in there?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Okay. Any additional questions? Okay. I just, I guess as chairman, I've got just a couple of questions I'd like to ask. On the waiver request, most of the, from what I see here, most of the waivers relate to the outdoor storage. Is that correct?
Correct.
I mean, I know there's a couple, you know, there that probably could be considered, you know, for the indoor portion, but, you know, the outdoor storage, whatever. On that, the waiver about the number of parking places. I think we had some testimony earlier from a lady that, you know, said that there's, you know, folks seem to park in some of their area and whatever. So, if we reduce the number of parking spaces required, will that not exasperate that problem or the potential to exasperate that problem?
The whole facility is going to be fenced. I don't know if we made that clear or not, but the whole facility will be fenced. So, if somebody's in the facility, they are parking in the facility. If they're outdoors, I have no control of that.
And what would be your rationalization on the moving the parking in the 25, you know, being opposed to the 25 feet, you know, having to move that, you know, the waiver for the 25-foot boundary or whatever? I mean, I know.
Well, if you saw even just where she kind of drew it with her finger, it destroyed literally the whole parking lot. So, nothing in essence is changing from what it is now. So, if you can imagine my whole parking lot being full right now, that's, it never would get worse than that. And we're going to actually put up an opaque fence. So, any concerns about us, people seeing things in there is, I think, handled with that. But I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Okay. And, let's see, the landscape screening waiver that, you know, I know you talked a lot about the opacity of the screening versus, you know, leaving it open and that kind of thing. Is that, I mean, you're just concerned about having that screen where you can't see, you know, in or out of the property? Is that, I mean, is that, what was your opposition basically to that opacity requirement?
Yeah, there's actually a couple of points there. The first point was I was actually asking for a waiver for all of it. But honestly, after going around town and looking at people that didn't have any, I said, yes, let's do that where the apartments are. As far as the other sides with the ingress and egress, that's for visibility purposes. And as far as where the site triangle would be, that would be for visibility as well.
Can I jump in?
Sure.
Because I've got a question. I don't know where you're really talking about. So, I'm going to have Brooke put up an overhead and point on the plan because you're saying where the apartments are and then not here.
Oh, okay.
And I'm sorry that I don't understand completely where you're suggesting you put the opaque screen.
Well, the opaque was this area here, up to where I'm calling the site triangle. And again, I'm going to defer to you folks on what exactly that definition is. But to my understanding, site triangle, something like that. So, when you come up to the intersection, you can see left or right before you make a turn. So, I'm thinking of this first squiggly line I put, that's what faces the apartment complex. So, I'm agreeing to put an opaque fence there so they don't see through. And then as far as where the fencing might be just chain link would be in this area where, I'll just double it up here. That area.
Can we do this instead? Can we put this on the overhead? It might be easier to.
I have that.
Or do you have it? Yeah. I mean, it might be easier than.
Actually, the other one, I almost had it.
Do you want me to put it on the overhead so you can see?
No, no, that's fine. No, this works.
One more. It was actually the, yeah, okay. So, the orange line or the yellow line, for instance, would be where the opaque fence would be, chain link with opaque slats. And then the blue line would be just regular chain link. And then also where the gates are would be open. I'm just trying to think ahead of what people would do if they're sitting in that lot coming out of the environment and they need to see. So, even on that electric fence on the bottom there, it might be that we want that to be clear chain link on the sides and maybe a couple of feet on either side. Just trying to make it easy when people come in and out.
Ms. Lawson, on the, one additional question. Your timeline, if this were approved today, both sections, the indoor storage and the outdoor storage, what kind of timeline are you looking at to complete both sections if they were both approved?
The indoor would take at least eight months just because we have to get things made and everything. And then I would suggest we would probably have the outdoor another three months after that.
So, you, I thought I understood earlier that you really didn't have any plans yet that, you know, you want, you were going to get the indoor storage built and then, you know, somewhere down the road then move on to section two, you know, which would be the outdoor storage. You know, I thought I heard you say that earlier in your presentation.
Well, I wanted to do two phases. And the reason for clarifying that it's two phases, there's one regulation somewhere and I can look it up for you. But if I were to say I'm going to do an outdoor facility until I finish all the fencing, I can't get a certificate of occupancy for the inside of the units. So, I want to get the inside of the units, get a certificate of occupancy, start renting it, start making money for it, from it, before I start doing the fencing because it just seems like a more logical way to go at it.
And one other question on the outdoor storage. I didn't hear you too much talk about the lighting. I did hear you say that, you know, there would be no additional lighting, but if you put outdoor storage, there would have to be some additional lighting, would there not?
Not necessarily. We do have three poles up there already and we do have lighting from the building itself. Now, one of the concerns I think with residential is they don't want too much lighting going on because then it blows them out at night. So, we're trying to be mindful of what that means. And, I mean, we might put a couple lights up on the building going down, but we want to be mindful of our neighbors.
All right, commissioners, any additional questions? Mr. King and then Mr. Faalby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Lawson, with respect to the outdoor storage, I am lacking clarity in what your plans are there. So, what is it that you have in mind? Do you have vehicle and boat storage or structures or both? What is it that you're trying to do with the outdoor storage?
Well, right now, part of this is exploratory to make sure that I can actually move forward with this project. And that's why I need some of these waivers. If I can't move forward with the project, you know, there's no point. To answer your question directly, yes. It could be outdoor units, in which case we don't even need a chain link fence. We've got the backside of the units like other storage units around town have used. And that would be in keeping with the solid wall concept of, instead of a fence. So, we could have a combination of units, outdoor units, just like you see at Storage Masters across the street with parking, which could be for jet skis and smaller boats. We don't have enough space. In fact, I'm not sure who brought it up, but as far as the turning radius, the way that lot is set up, we don't have enough turning radius for even a bigger unit. So, it would be all smaller units. Think of maybe garden.
If there were units. Because, I mean, what you just said is you don't know that there will be units.
No, I'm saying, I'm suggesting that the parking spots would be for those types, not the units themselves, I'm sorry. So, a unit, well, there's units that are a 10-by-10 unit, right? Just think of a closet, 10-by-10 unit, outdoor unit, just like any other outdoor storage, and then separate parking spaces. Those are two different things within the parking structure.
So.
Makes sense?
So, you conceptualize storing vehicles, boats, and having some actual units constructed for storage?
Correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
But you don't know the number or combination of those yet?
The comment I made earlier about some of the stuff being like furniture that you put in a room, it's furniture. We have not yet placed the furniture where it fits perfectly yet.
And the number that would make up the total, you don't know yet?
Around 80.
80 units would be constructed-ish?
80 units slash parking spots.
But we really can't define and clarify units and/or parking in terms of the mix yet?
I may be completely wrong, but I'm not asking for a building permit at this point. I'm asking for, I'm asking for a waiver to be able to do these things. So, I will be presenting to building and planning a complete documented structural everything. But at this point, I do not have specific numbers and locations in mind.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Can I just dovetail with you? I think what he's saying is we're being asked to consider a development plan. And that's what you're trying to clarify is what is on the development plan itself. Forget the waivers that are requested. The development plan itself, what does that look like? Is it outdoors? Is it typical storage units? Is it open parking? Or is it a combination of both? And what's their arrangement? And that's what he's grappling with.
Okay. So, for instance, if you can imagine the external, where I'm saying, let's not have a 25-foot setback because let's just leave it where the parking lot is now. So, where the parking lot is now, that could be units, boxes, if you will, that are used for outdoor storage. And then the interior, which would help shield the interior from view. And then we would have theoretically some boat slash car slash small RV slash small trailer storage and the interior of that.
Thank you.
But you're right. I don't have a specific plan.
All right, I appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Faalby.
Mr. King really addressed my points. I'm just, we're having a hard time imagining, your words, what the plan would look like without a plan. We're used to seeing a plan and then making a decision. So, but he asked the question, so I'm fine.
All right, Mr. Douglas.
Well, part of my question was answered. I guess, Mr. Lawson, you can see we're kind of stuck here because basically in order for us to review the conditional use permit for outdoor storage or grant waivers for outdoor storage setback, we really don't know what the outdoor is going to consist of in your testimony. So, that's kind of hard to follow up with questions on it. But I do have questions on as far as like the entryway to the electric gate. I notice it's, you know, some of them have 27 feet wide and one has 24 feet wide. But I don't see the depth driving in off of these boulevards and avenues. Like, for traffic-wise, like if I was coming in with, not me, but anyone coming in with a 40 or 50-foot for bringing a load in to bring it in for storage, where were they, how would they, what's the egress distance-wise?
Yeah, I think I've got about 30-plus feet there. It, that's a good question. I mean, that's something that we've been looking at having apps where you can actually open the gate before you get there, which I think would be the smartest thing to do because otherwise we would have to have a gate so far in there to address your concerns that doesn't really make sense. So, we're looking at that right now as that potential of having, to be able to open it on your way in.
And would the existing asphalt handle a semi truck coming in with a load of furniture or whatever, a load that people are going to store, if it's a climate control?
Yeah.
Will that handle?
Yeah, we've got, we recycle our lead and we've got tons and tons and tons go out on trucks when we recycle and tons and tons come in with ammunition. So, yes, it will support that.
Okay. And my next question would be is, do you know who owns the property? That's, because we didn't hear anybody talk about it, not even staff, 6421, which is between Concord Avenue and Crosskey Boulevard, I guess behind, I don't know if it's behind your building.
Are you thinking of here?
And to the left of your building. Yeah, but see, that's right here. And do we know what its zone? 6421? It's a vacant lot?
It's Robert Green Louisville, it's a Louisville business address. I sent the notice.
I can't see what that zone, I don't know.
It's Zone C3.
C3? Okay.
He owned the center, Cresswood Station, before he sold it to the church.
Okay. I had one more, but. It slipped on my, Mr. Chairman, I forgot what the other question was.
Okay. I know Ms. Bonnet's got a question, but let me follow up one of your questions, Mr. Douglas. You talked about on the, you know, as it is now, there's plenty of room to turn tractor-trailers and whatever around in the parking area. But if you build additional outdoor storage or have additional outdoor storage there, will that not take up quite a bit of the space that the trucks currently use to turn around and get in and out of your property?
Well, the way we'd lay it out is so they could go in one gate and out the next. So, it would, that's what they do now. So, it wouldn't.
So, there's two, will be two gates?
There's two entrances.
Okay. Both of them be gated?
Yeah, both of them would be electronic gates.
Okay. Show on the map where the both gates will be located. That's probably not the best picture, but.
Yeah, it's probably, if you want to get back to the site plan.
Do you want the map or the site plan?
Probably the site plan.
There's a site plan. So, here's one. Oops. Don't know how to do that. And here's another here. Those are your two.
Okay. So, you're saying that there will be adequate space even though we don't know what the configuration of proposed additional outdoor storage would be, there would be adequate room for trucks to get in and maneuver around and get out the other entrance?
Yeah, they've been doing it since we've been there.
What is the, what will be the width of the entrance down on the?
It's 27, I believe. It's 24 in the bottom and 27.
It's narrower than the one than the main entrance.
Yeah, the top one is the wider one.
All right, Ms. Bonnet.
This is in response to a comment that the lady from All About Kids made and just me thinking. I don't see any dumpsters anywhere on your property or I couldn't see from the aerial photo or from the site plan. Are you going to have any dumpsters available? Because, I mean, storage always seems to produce some waste as people bring stuff in and clear stuff out. I'm just wondering if you're going to provide.
We do have dumpsters and just to, if you don't mind me replying to her comment.
Sure.
I lived, she doesn't know this, I lived right behind just about kids for five years before Storage Masters even opened. Goats, beds, you name it, were dropped there all the time. So, yes, there are pigs that live in Oldham County, but it's not necessarily from the storage. In fact, I know a lot of people from the apartment complex have used our dumpster. So, I wouldn't necessarily point the finger at storage right now.
Well, it will, I mean, storage will produce some trash. I'm just wondering if there is going to be a dumpster on site.
Yeah, we have a dumpster on site.
Where is that located?
Right now, the dumpster is here and it probably will stay there.
Okay. All right, thank you.
It gives enough ingress and egress for a dump truck to come pick it up.
Okay. Is that all? Ms. Bonnet?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Horton?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I might have missed this, so I might have been asking a question that, what was the, why the difference between the 24-foot gate at the bottom and the 27 at the top? Is there a specific reason?
It's the way it's cut now. It's the way it is right now.
Okay.
We're just leaving it the way it was and then pulling the gate in so people have enough room to travel.
Okay, well, that's my second question. How deep is that area that they're going to pull in before the gates are there?
Yeah, we thought that's, it looks to be about 30. I can't really see it right here. I'd have to pull mine out. But around 30-feet-ish.
About 30, like 30 or like 38 or 9 or?
Let me look that.
Do you know what scale is on your drawing?
Scale's one to three.
It's 24 on the bottom and 27 at the top. And the depth, I doubt.
So, it's 24, the bottom one's 24 feet wide and 24 feet deep then?
That's, I think, what I drew it in, yeah.
And then one at the top is 27 feet wide and 27 feet deep.
Yeah, it might actually be a little wider, a little deeper on top. It looks almost 30 feet. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Any additional questions? Any additional questions for the applicant or the folks that testified in opposition to the plan? Okay. I see no additional hands going up. So, we will now move into rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the applicant. Lawson, so you have 10 minutes here.
The concern primarily seems to be on a lack of specific detail for the outdoor storage. I understand that. Yet, part of the goal of this meeting is for me to see if this is a reality, if this is going to be a feasible project to move forward. If I can't do the outdoor storage, for instance, if you don't grant me leaving the parking lot where it is right now, that cuts into the economics of the outdoor storage. If I can't use that, this is not a slam dunk, right? You've got to, storage, you've got to use every little square inch and make it the best it could possibly be for the customers and for our bottom line. So, if we can't have the outdoor storage, it would make the project not feasible. And that kicks a lot of other things into line. So, we can't use the property for the highest, best use and it puts us at an economic disadvantage for a property we already own, which already has a layout, which already won't really change the look of. So, I understand the concerns. I would have loved to have paid an architect $35,000 to draw this stuff out. But until I know that I can move forward and this makes sense, I'm still going to submit all of this with an architect to the building division. They're going to look at it and they're going to say, hey, you know, I need 40 feet to pull into the parking lot. I'm fine with that. I don't have any issues with this. So, when we talk about not being able to understand what it looks like, could you please clarify what that means? Because I think all of us knows what an outdoor storage looks like. And I'm not understanding what specifically it is you would like to see just for this, understanding what I just said, that this is a preliminary, I got to see if this is feasible or not. What specifically is the concern of you not being able to see what it looks like?
Well, let me, as chairman of the commission, let me just say that I think there's just some concerns about the waivers, for one thing. I mean, it just is, you know, the number of waivers and, you know, and I'm not, certainly not speaking for the commission, but I'm just, from what I'm hearing from the questions and from the concerns being expressed from some of the commissioners, that, you know, we're not usually at the commission, you know, we have some concerns when we see this many waivers and why those waivers are being requested. And, you know, so I think we'd just like to see a little bit more detail, you know, when you're asking for that kind of waivers or where, as far as the commission's concerned. And now, speaking as chairman and not, you know, I'm not, certainly not speaking for all the commissioners or whatever, and we'll do that when we vote here shortly. But I'm just, you know, that's kind of what we traditionally, you know, when this many waivers are being requested, I think, you know, everybody's antenna go up and like, you know, why is, why are those number of waivers required to be able to do this?
The way I set this up, I was the one who said waiver number one. Number two, I don't necessarily know that there are four or five waivers in here. It's one waiver I'm asking for. It just happens to have four, five, three or four different features to it. I didn't know what you would like to see. So, I separated them by what I thought made sense, not necessarily what, I don't do this every day, right? So, I'm not sure when we say four waivers, one spins another into different directions. So, I look at it more as I'm saving your time, your future time, by getting this over with now. And instead of me coming in six weeks from now and doing it again, another six weeks doing it again, this is all the things I could think of after reading all the regulations, which are fun to do, by the way, that came up in my mind that would spin it in. So, for instance, to get the certificate of occupancy without having to do the outdoor, that was spun by one. Now, is that really a waiver? I don't know. I mean, I guess you could call it that, but it's not, I'm not, I'm not planning anything here. This is just stuff I found when I read through that perked in me, something that said, I better address this now because this is really important to the project. But I'd like to reiterate, nothing is changing with the property. I could have 114 people come and park in every single parking lot and legally do that and within all regulations and everything I've done so far, nothing changes. So, for me to say, okay, well, it's not that, it's a VW bug that somebody, you know, loves and they just want to park it there, or it's a jet ski or something else. And I'm also shielding that from the residential area across the street. So, I understand what you're up against. You've got to look at all the regulations and see how it fits. My job is to try to think ahead of what problems we might have and let's get them out of the way now and see if this is feasible.
All right. Any additional questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Wrong section, rebuttal. Do you have anything else that you'd like to add, sir?
No, just as far as the concerns with the garbage, like I said, that's innate in our area. And I'm sorry they think that this would add to it. I think it actually might detract because we're going to keep people out of our property unless they belong there. So, that doesn't seem to be an issue. I'm, again, after using my property for the highest and best use. Now, we can watch the business go downhill. We can see it get blighted. We can see it ruin the area. Or we can make some decisions based on flexibility that we can turn this into a real amazing opportunity for the neighbors to be able to store their goods and be close to them, which is really, really important. And I believe it will help all the apartment complexes around us having a place to keep their stuff, that they can feel close to it. Like I said, most of these storage facilities look at a three-mile radius and there is, it's very condensed right now, hence you see all these people asking for permits. And to have this other type of storage, the conditioned storage is, it's a real, I believe it's a real value to the area and to businesses as well. It helps them.
All right. You complete your rebuttal, sir? Okay. All right. Now, we're down to rebuttal evidence and cross-examination by the opposition. Mr. Porter, I would assume you want to go first?
I will be very brief. Thank you for the opportunity. Just without too much repetition of what I've already said to you because I think your questions and comments have all been right on line. I just don't think you can approve the outdoor conditional use permit and the outdoor storage without a better plan than has been submitted. There just isn't a plan that you can look at and say, that looks good. And that's your job. That's what you all do. And there just isn't one. His talk about feasibility, the preceding case that you all just already decided on was only asking for 42 indoor units. was only asking for 42 indoor units, no outdoor storage, although they had excess space out in the parking lot because they had extra parking spaces beyond what they required without asking for a parking waiver. They could have asked for some outdoor storage, but they didn't. This proposal is for 396 indoor units. Now, that, that ought to make some money all by itself without the outdoor storage. So, I don't think that the claim that there is a feasibility that without the outdoor storage, this thing can't be feasible. It can be. 396 units is good income. So, I'll just conclude, one, one other little thing, as far as the gates are concerned, if you don't have outdoor storage approved, you don't need gates because you don't have a fence. So, you don't have to worry about how deep they are, or how wide they are, or anything else. But finally, Mr. Laws said it is logical to wait till the indoor is producing income before doing the fencing. Well, I think it is logical to wait until the indoor is producing income and has shown to be a good project before he even applies for any outdoor. Thank you.
Mr. Do you have something you'd like to add as far as?
No, I have nothing to add.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Porter, don't sit down too quick here. Time for final statement. Final statement, if you have a final statement.
I'll just declare that as my final statement, what I just said. I don't need to say anymore.
All right, thank you, sir.
Right down?
All right. Mr. Laws, final statement.
With all due respect to lawyers, sometimes they aren't businessmen. This is a very interesting project. It's very exciting. But there's a lot of details that have a lot of money attached to them. No, I cannot make it on indoor storage alone. It costs a lot of money to build this out. I do need the outdoor storage to supplement it. I do want to do the indoor first because that's something I can contain while we're working on it. And the outdoor storage is something that we will dress it at the end and make that another income operating units for us. So, whatever anybody thinks, unless, I'd be happy to share my spreadsheets with you. This is an interesting project. There's a lot of details. And I'd love to get this ready to go so I can go to the next step, which is to start ordering the units inside and ordering for outside. And I appreciate it. And again, I'm looking to highest and best use. And the property visually, if you drive by after we have this done, you're going to be hard-pressed to know the difference, except there'll be a fence around it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. With that, Docket PZ 18015 has concluded. And I'll now ask Mr. Urban, I assume we'll consider the waivers first, correct?
Oh, boy.
So, I'll let you outline, you know.
What I, what I think it makes sense is that there's a waiver for the minimum lot size and a conditional use for the indoor door storage, which appears to be uncomplicated by all the other waivers. So, in my mind, it would make sense to consider that those two items first. In your staff report, on page three, you have a motion that includes findings, of course, for either approval or denial. The first item that you want to consider, and again, this would just be for the indoor storage only, would be the minimum lot size waiver. And then the second item that we'll talk about after you consider that would be the conditional use for the indoor storage only. So, let's talk about just the lot.
Okay. All right.